Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the regular meeting of your Danville City Commission for November 27th, 2017. The hour is 5:32, and I would ask that we be led in prayer by Commissioner Denise Terry.
Thank you. Please bow your heads with me. To our God Almighty, I bring to you all the members of our city. I ask that you cover us with a rainbow of hope. Hope that draws us together to work out our differences. Hope that helps us celebrate together and care for one another. Hope that overcomes adversity and gathers strength to overcome. Hope that guides us and gives us vision for our future alone and together. Hope filled with love that fuels faith and breathes peace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, ma'am. And we'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Kevin Cottle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, you did that so well, I think we'll have you do it every time from here on. He didn't miss a beat. We are at the -- excuse me, let me interject. Commissioner, you have seen the agenda. Is there any additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, I'll assume it meets your approval, and we'll move into the section we call "Hear the Public." This is the opportunity for the public to address the commission on any item that is on tonight's agenda, and tonight's agenda only. Later on, when we get through the majority of our business, there'll be an opportunity to do "Hear the Public" on any other item that's on your mind. So with that said, is there anyone that would like to address any topic on tonight's agenda? Going once, going twice, we'll move right along. Item one is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting for November 13th. When you've had a moment, Chair will accept the motion to approve them.
I move that we accept the minutes from Monday, November 13th, 2017, as they were corrected currently.
Thank you, Commissioner Serres. Anyone else? Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Terry. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Let me see the fine young folks from the U-12 soccer state championship. And I want you to come right up here, and I want you to line up right in front of this. Yeah, let's get the coaches up here.
Coaches, too.
And while you're standing there looking pretty, I'm going to read a proclamation to the Boyle County Huskies Youth Soccer. Whereas the Boyle County Huskies U-12 -- Boyle Youth Soccer Team has done an incredible job representing Danville, Boyle County in 2017 at both the state and local level. And whereas in the spring of 2017, the Huskies had a record of 22-0, won the 2017 Kentucky American Cup, allowed only 16 goals during the 22-game season, and were undefeated state champions. And whereas in the fall of 2017, the Huskies had a record of 15-0, won the 2017 Commonwealth Cup, and during the state tournament, did not allow a goal in 180 minutes of soccer and remained undefeated state champions. And whereas the Huskies have won two state championships, finished runner-up two times, and are the only team who has swept the top division at both the Kentucky American Cup and the Commonwealth Cup in 2017. And whereas the Huskies are outstanding role models to the youth of Danville and Boyle County, both on and off the field, participating in the Hurricane Harvey relief effort by sending two large truckloads of donations to Texas, and serving as mentors to younger soccer players throughout the year. And whereas the Boyle County Huskies are shining examples of focus and dedication to be the best they can be as a team, coming together to accomplish great things and support each other in the face of adversity. Now therefore, Mayor G. Michael Peros and the City Commissioners of the City of Danville, on this 27th day of November, 2017, do hereby recognize the Boyle County Huskies Youth Soccer Team on their accomplishments, both on and off the field, and encourage the citizens of Danville to congratulate them on their success, leadership, and representation of Danville, Kentucky. Let's give 'em a hand, folks. Why don't we start from left to right? Tell us your name, your position.
Jonathan Martin. I've coached with Anthony down there for the -- since we were -- oh, sorry. Since a lot of these kids were U-8, some of them, all the way back until they were three and four years old, have played together. And we've seen this team grow and work very, very hard and get to the place they're at today. So very proud of this group and honored to be a part of it.
My name is Alan Wireman. I play middle defense.
My name is McLean Denny, and I play goalkeeper.
My name is Garrett Allen, and I play left mid.
My name is Jackson Pass, and I play right mid.
My name is Cole Hardwick, and I play forwards.
My name is Diddy Cooley, and I also play forward.
My name is Jackson Poole, and I play center mid.
My name is Carly Oss, and I play left mid and right mid.
My name is Woods Martin, and I play right D and forward.
My name is Malika Floyd, and I play midfielder.
My name is Ava Mewks, and I play forward.
My name is Wyatt Fielder, and I play forward.
My name is Alex Young, and I play right forward.
My name is Maishawn, and I play left mid and center mid. Yeah.
Anthony Wireman, I play coach.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we've got one more. Got late entry here. Better late than never.
What'd I do? Say your name and what position you play.
My name is Indell, and I play left back.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay, coaches -- excuse me, I'm sorry. Pardon me. Coaches, I want to do this. I want to put you all in the middle behind these kids. We're going to get a good photo here. Now, don't be sticking people with those pins tomorrow, all right? I don't want to hear about it, okay? You can tell what I'd be thinking, can't you? Coach, you want to come over here? Why don't you get right behind me?
We're missing two, for sure.
Two pins or two kids?
Two kids.
Two kids. All right. Y'all hold this together, right here.
Oh, my.
Hurtin' cats. Now, wait a minute, tighten up, gang. Tighten up. Now, look alive. So the question I have is, after all those accomplishments, what are you going to do in 2018? Win. Great. Everybody got their photos? Once again, let's give 'em a hand. Way to go, kids. And way to go, coaches. Yeah. Do we need a vote on that proclamation? Do we vote on proclamation?
Yeah, we just accept it in the record. I'll make it.
Commissioner, do I hear a motion of the acceptance of the proclamation?
I move that we accept the proclamation into the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item three is Resolution Number 2017-11-27-01. This is the CAD Software Bid Award.
I trust, like you all, that you read the entire thing.
Absolutely.
No, I know Rebecca did, though.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
She read both of these.
Yes, in detail.
We have that on record.
Yes. The city advertised to solicit bids for the computer-aided dispatch, which we consider the CAD system. Is it on?
It's on.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure we could hear you.
The city advertised to solicit bids for the computer-aided dispatch system, which we call the CAD system. It's the system where we keep all of our warrant information, call logs, tow logs, everything that we do day-to-day, minute-to-minute. The bids were open in October the 16th. Four vendors requested the RFP, and two vendors submitted bids. Those were Zerker Technologies and Geo Connects. And then I think you'll have the bids attached to your -- in your files. Based on the pricing and the system features demonstrated by the vendors, it's our recommendation that the city award the bid to Geo Connects in the amount of $244,073.59.
How's that -- oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The yearly cost on this was fixed, unlike the other vendor that automatically increases year-to-year. They're also based in Knoxville, Tennessee, which is a closer area if anything onsite or troubleshooting needed to go on. The price also includes software and AVL, which is Automatic Vehicle Location, for 35 mobiles for the Danville Police Department, and that will come out of the general fund. This is only one purchase of probably very many to come, because we'll be updating our consoles and telephone system and recorder and...
All that'll integrate or hope.
Yes. It'll all interface kind of together.
Do I hear a motion to accept Resolution 2017-11-27-01?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Serres. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Any discussion? I have a question, if you wouldn't mind, for the folks who are joining us tonight. You want to explain what this does?
This helps get our information on 911 calls, the automatic location and the phone number for any 911 calls, cell phones. It includes the tower that the cellphone hits, which is -- goes into pretty proximity. Also, if the phone has GPS, it'll allow us to track them on the map, to be able to locate them and send police out if we hear a disturbance but nobody will answer you. We keep all of our call records, hang-up 911 calls, vehicle accidents. It'll be easier -- the reporting, too, will be easier for supervisors and statistics and stuff like that.
So this was actually -- seems to be a better product or from a local vendor and has some features that the other folks didn't have, but it's considerably cheaper.
Yes.
Have you worked with these guys before?
I have not. We have visited Frankfurt. Frankfurt has their system currently. I think they really like it. We also seen demos, and several of the dispatchers were in on the demos as well and gave their input of what they did and didn't like with both vendors. But I think the main thing is the maintenance.
Any further questions or comments?
Right.
Sure. So this is very much enhanced from what you're currently doing in terms of being able to track where the call's coming from?
Correct.
Okay.
The system we have now has mainly like three screens for our 911, our open calls and like our unit lists, which are like the policemen and the fire trucks and stuff like that that we dispatch. This system has more windows, but it's better access. Like there's a whole window just for the alerts that'll automatically pop up and show there. You don't have to go in the call and click on it and go to the alert tab that we have to do now. So it's more efficient.
More efficient. So I think you did a lot of good research. Did you have the police department and the fire department involved in this, along with the city manager?
The police department and the city manager were involved, yes.
Okay. All right. Didn't involve you so much, then, huh, Ken? Okay. So as we look down the road, and maybe this has nothing to do with it, but we certainly want to get EMD going.
Correct.
Will this software system have anything that will apply to that?
The software is a standalone thing, but if we decide, once we get this CAD system put in, you can interface the system that does EMD and the CAD system together.
Okay. Emergency medical dispatch is what I'm talking about, of course, in case anybody didn't know what EMD was, but, okay.
They make standalone software for that as well as to integrate into the CAD system.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question for the vote. All in favor of the resolution as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Item four is the first reading of Ordinance Number 1908. This is consent for annexation request from the Boyle County Industrial Foundation. Counselor Dexter, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. The ordinance before you is a first reading of an ordinance proposing to annex the unincorporated territory lying adjacent to and contiguous with the present city boundaries located on Lebanon Road across from Alum Springs Cross Pike, which property is owned by the Boyle County Industrial Foundation, consisting in the whole of 142.318 acres, more or less, and being accurately described in the Ordinance Number 1908. Again, this is a first reading. This ordinance is brought before you at the request of the Industrial Foundation in conjunction with an economic development project currently titled Project Angel, which will be disclosed at a future point in time, I'll say. And you will see attached in your packet is a consent to annexation that is signed by the Industrial Foundation on the 21st day of November. And again, this is a first reading, and to accommodate the request so that this annexation will be finalized prior to a zone change request before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their first meeting in December, a second reading will be necessary at your special called meeting this coming Wednesday.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to accept Ordinance Number 1908.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. You're in discussion?
No.
Go ahead.
No. I was just going to say, just for the public's knowledge, anytime there's an annexation, what's in it for the city? That's kind of a question I get sometimes.
The short answer is a lot. What happens when a territory is annexed, especially in conjunction with an economic development project, of course, you are thinking about a potential job creator, you're looking at improved land, which will increase the real property tax base, and then obviously occupational taxes, once employment is derived, when the project comes to fruition. And, you know, the benefit for the landowner and eventual prospect is the extension of city services, which water, sewer, police, and fire, which they receive reduced premiums from that, and also the essential services that the city delivers. And so you'll see the follow-up as your next item on the agenda.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
I'll just tag off of that. I've had a similar question or comment, I should say. I kind of read that as seeing a lot to a great EDP thing for us naturally. I think if I read this correctly, too, I think the other positive was is that we do the annexation, but anything to do with water and that property, I think, is being assumed by who may be growing their Project Angel. Is that correct?
That's right. Our ordinance for the extension of sewer and water services requires the developer to pay for the infrastructure, and then they will receive the services from that, obviously the benefits of it.
Yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to -- kind of wanted to put that out there so people knew that. I think that this looks like a good thing for Project Angel when we finally find out what that project is.
There are no more questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Cottle?
Yes.
Mr. Serres?
Yes.
Item five is Resolution Number 2017-11-27-02. This is an agreement for the extension of water and sewer services. Continue on, Mr. Dexter, if you need.
Thank you, Mayor. The resolution before you involves the same property that you just had a first reading on to be annexed into the city, and our ordinance requires an agreement to be developed with a property owner for the extension of water and sewer. This is the typical agreement we have entered into with any developer requiring such services, and it specifies in our ordinance that water will only be extended to the extent that sewer is extended, so as to prevent only the extension of one critical utility, but not the other. And however, in this situation, the agreement is somewhat different in that it allows for water to be extended initially, right off the bat, which will -- the price of which will be paid for by the property owner or the assignee being the commercial purchaser in the future, with the understanding that the sewer infrastructure will be developed as soon as practical, but within five years. And so this agreement solidifies the city's ordinance requirements. The city engineer and city manager have reviewed and approved it, and the Industrial Foundation has reviewed it with their board, and it is signed off on as well.
Do I hear a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
I move for approval of Resolution 2017-11-27-02.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Discussion? Seeing none, Chair call the question. All in favor of the resolution as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mayor, before we move on, I'd be remiss, too, if I didn't mention that this particular project would be, I would say, an example of efficiency and cooperation between the Industrial Foundation, the Economic Development Partnership, and the City of Danville to work not only quickly but efficiently to come up with an agreement that says we're open for business. And you should know that the process has never been as smooth or as easy as it was for this project.
We like that a lot. Item six, 911 Service Agreement Discussion. Mr. Dexter, do continue.
I come before you tonight presenting an opportunity to resolve what has been an issue for over a decade, and that is the funding of the city's 911 call center and its cooperative public agencies, being the Boyle County Fiscal Court and other service providers, the City of Junction City, the City of Perriville, Boyle County Fire Protection District, and any other agency that may receive services of dispatch from the city's 911 center. As you're well aware, the county currently holds about $750,000 approximately in reserve funds from the state and local 911 tax monies that are earmarked to be spent on the city's 911 call center. And this body, some time ago in the fall, authorized that those funds be received and that we pursue them to whatever means necessary. We have exercised due diligence by seeking answers from the state 911 board, the Attorney General, none of which have provided clear guidance. And all the while, we have sought an amicable resolution by settlement with the county, and the last several months have involved good faith, ongoing, productive negotiations. And I am honored to present to you tonight what I would consider a final draft of a service agreement by which the county and city have compromised to think how best structured the 911 center should operate, and that is with the city being essentially the vendor of a service and the county being the vendee, and agreeing to receive services and contract with the city for said services in a clearly coherent written agreement that specifies that the receipt of the reserve funds will be transferred immediately upon signing of this document, and the receipt of future state monies and local tax dollars to be forwarded to the city from the county as a pass-through entity within 20 days of receipt, and that the county will be billed quarterly for the services that are received from the city's 911 center, and they'll pay those bills within 20 days of receipt. This clarifies a host of material issues that have come to a head over the past year but have been the subject to long negotiations for at least five years, but have been problematic for more than a decade. As I said, we've negotiated extensively with the county judge executive and the county attorney to resolve their concerns. There is an advisory board that is created under this document, which has never occurred in this community before, to provide every interested party and recipient of dispatch services a voice to look at budgetary issues, file grievances, review calls if necessary, to look at process and procedures and manuals, and that would occur -- those meetings would occur quarterly. And we think providing all those agencies a voice is critical to the implementation of a successful 911 center. City wants it. County wants it, and this is a good way to move forward. Now, as in any compromise settlement agreement, you never get everything you want, but this is the best foot forward that we can possibly attain, and it clarifies the receipt and expenditure of funds, which is the big elephant in the room, and also addresses how we're going to address communication and potential grievances moving forward. This is a four-year agreement. It, again, is more than we've ever had, and in the spirit of cooperation and compromise, and most importantly, the utilization of a critical service for this community, both residents of Danville and residents of Boyle County at large, this is the best way to resolve the issues at hand. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the particular terms that are in the agreement. It has been very fluid and was essentially finalized about four o'clock this afternoon. And I'm hopeful that the court -- the court is going to consider this document tomorrow, and I am hopeful that they will receive it as you do and pass it, so we can put this issue to rest by the end of this year, or by the end of the week, rather.
I think there is action needed on this.
I will move for approval of the City of Danville 911 Public Service Answering Point Service Agreement.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cottle, or a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Terry. We're in discussion. I like this grievance form enough of this back channel. If we've got a problem, let's put it in writing, let's deal with it, and I like that. Of course, you've cleared up the part about the funding, and there's one other area. Oh, as far as the advisory committee, I like the language in here that says, shall -- to meet -- like that. Of course, you, you've cleared up the part about the funding, and there's one other area. Oh, as far as the advisory committee, I like the language in here that says, shall, to meet not less than quarterly. So I would encourage, if the county accepts this, and you, you made a mention a moment ago that, you know, if the county wants this, I think it's, I think the citizens want it. And, and so let's, let's see if we have agreement amongst fiscal court, but I would encourage that advisory committee initially. Let's start on a monthly basis. That's their call, but that'd be my recommendation. Start this on a monthly basis and make sure everything's working, everybody's satisfaction, and then go to a quarterly basis. But I like what you've done there.
You mentioned that anytime there's a compromise, each side has to give a little, what, what, what points did we give on?
I would have preferred a 10-year agreement, so as this would not resurface in every, at a shorter duration, and like our franchising agreements and things of that nature, I would have preferred a longer duration to allow multiple commissions and multiple courts to allow it to be successful. However, the court wanted, the court would have preferred a governing board as opposed to an advisory board. And as a matter of compromise, my point was we've never had any type of advisory or governing board, and so let's let the advisory committee and have a chance to see if it works, and if it heals the tensions that have been festering. And so in order to accommodate my request for an advisory committee as opposed to a governing board, we shortened the duration at the county's request to see if it's successful, and I think that's reasonable. It's hard to go from no agreement to a nod and a handshake to a 10-page stipulated agreement with clarified terms for much longer than this, even though I would have desired it.
I like, I like the fact that, that the advisory board consists of the folks who have boots on the ground. There, there's nobody from this city commission on there, there's nobody from fiscal court on there, so it, the people that, that interface with this on a daily basis, they're the ones that need to be there.
Another matter is, we would have probably preferred that the funds from the state come directly to the city without having the county serve as a funnel, but that was a mechanism that they preferred and were more comfortable with because they have always received the funds. And due to the fact that they will collect the local tax dollars anyway, that was another point of compromise from the city, instead of demanding the funds come directly from the state to the city's coffers to allow them to pass through the city, or, excuse me, pass through the county for funneling to the city.
I just wanted to say that this is one of the first things, if not the first thing, that Mr. Scott took on coming in, even as the interim city manager, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate your professionalism and your knowledge of how important this is, and I appreciate Mr. Dexter's professionalism and not letting go of this issue and helping us through this to get this agreement done. There's been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears on all of our ends, and probably some sleepless nights, and I just really appreciate the hard work that you two have, have put into this.
Well, thank you for that. I don't know if you want me to mention one other point, and that's how the city manager and financial officer came up with a cost-of-service plan, and that you may want to note in case you're asked about how, how we decided how to split costs. And the city manager felt it was fairest to base that on population served. So based on the last census data, what we'll do is look at the population of the county, take out the population of the city, figure out that ratio, and apply that ratio to the annual net costs of each budget cycle to derive the amount. And then the other service, or other public agencies receiving service are also based on population, but not based on that same ratio, because it would have been excessive for the demands that they place on the system, such as the City of Perriville and City of Junction City. And so those public agencies have been presented a document as well, and also for their approval. However, their pay structure is a little bit different. So, for instance, a pop, a city of, or agency that serves less than 1,000 people would just be billed $750 annually. A population from 1,000 to 2,500 would be $7,000, and anything over 2,500 would, would receive, would have to pay a multiplied percentage based on their population of the total cost. And then the exception is going to be the Bull County Fire Protection District, which is only going to pay $500 annually, contingent upon their allowing the city to continue to use its training facility. So there is a little bit of trade of services with the fire district.
Fair enough.
So a lot of, a lot of good comments. You answered most of my questions that I underlined. I don't know if they're really questions, but they're highlights for me, so I appreciate that. And the mayor brought up that he really appreciated how the advisory committee was made up. If, for those listening, though, I'd like, I'd like to state who that group is in case you're wondering. It's the Boyle County Sheriff's Department, Boyle County EMS, Boyle County Fire Protection District, City of Danville Police Department, the City of Danville Fire Department. So certainly, we know that, but I don't know if everybody else knew what was involved here in terms of...
Let me add also, for the record, that any other city or entity that had, that pays into this, for example, the City of Junction or City of Perriville, they, or the fire district, they will have a seat at that table also.
Excellent.
It's, well, just, just because you're looking at the contract with the county that named them specifically, but the other entities will have a seat at the table also.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, Chair calls a question. All in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Counselor Dexter, excellent work. I, I want to also congratulate publicly, and I hope you'll carry the message tomorrow, that we appreciate Lynn Dean's very hard work in this, and let her know that this passed unanimously.
I will do so, and I should note that the, the judge and city manager also worked tirelessly on this issue to come to this compromise, and I think it's one that the community will benefit from for quite some time, once it's allowed to be put into place.
I look forward to seeing it in operation. It's going to be, it's going to be best in the state. I'm convinced. With that said, we are in the city manager report. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Three brief items. A reminder to the city commission and to the public that we have our city commission staff retreat this Wednesday, the 29th, at Center College at the Commons on second floor, that's starting at 8:30, and it should last through at loose, at least noon, and it may last through portions of the afternoon. We have sent out, or will soon send out, a final agenda for that discussion as we look at where we are this fiscal year in terms of accomplishing our work projects that were outlined in the budget and where we might want to point toward, and completing some of those this fiscal year, and maybe get a head start on identification of issues for the next fiscal year. So that's an important discussion. I look forward to participating with you in that on Wednesday. Two other brief items. One, in your packet is a letter that is requested for your approval for the mayor to sign on behalf of the city commission nominating the Sister Cities Commission for the Governor's Community Arts Award that is given annually. You might recall that the City of Danville itself received this award a number of years ago, and certainly the, as contained in the letter, the Sister Cities Committee and all that they do, Sister Cities Commission, in promoting the arts here in Danville and the exchange with our sister city, Carrick Fergus, is very worthy of nomination to receive this award, so it's requested that you do approve that letter on behalf of the city.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
The remaining item is another letter in your packet requested to be approved by the city commission, which is our communication with the citizens of the City of Danville regarding our pending deployment of contract service providers to begin the replacement of our water meters with automatic read water meters. There's a announcement that will be made in the newsletter to, from the city to all citizens that should be in circulation as well, the first or second week of December, hopefully the first week of December, that contains some of this and additional most frequently asked questions. And we intend to put this on our webpage, too, as we begin this process. In reality, we won't begin the full deployment of that meter replacement effort until January. We've got kind of a test deployment first to make sure that we have everything set to go, and that's going to occur in December with a few properties, but the main effort will occur in January. The benefits of this will be that it's labor-saving for the city. It will give the citizens, as they are paying their bill at the window, the ability to see remotely if they have a leak or not, and it increases the overall efficiency of our system in a, in a substantial way, and it's part of that energy efficiency, efficiency improvement that we studied for about a year and a half and gave the award of that contract to Herschel Train earlier this year in August or September, I guess it was. So this process is going to last, really, throughout much of 2018. We may get all of these done before November, this time next year. We have a number of other projects, the whole energy efficiency improvements themselves will be, will run through essentially most, if not all, of 2018, but this is the announcement to the, to the public.
Anything else, sir?
Just the requested approval of that letter, so that we can send it out to citizens and put it on our webpage and so forth.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle, second?
Second.
Commissioner Terry, discussion?
Is this, does this go out to all Danville water customers, or just those within the city limits?
We will be sending out notifications to everyone with a schedule of when our contracted team will appear. They don't have to go in the houses, but we want, they'll, they'll be in uniform. We'll notify areas that are scheduled to be switched out ahead of time, and businesses a week to 10 days in advance, and this communication and related information will be sent out ahead of the targeted replacement efforts by segment of our community when it occurs.
How many of the communities our size use, use these electronic meters?
I'll defer to our city engineer on that. I'm not sure I know.
Several. It, it's really becoming a technology that's more and more viable, really. Some in Kentucky do. I can't remember the exact number. There are smaller ones than us that have recently made the, made the transition. Train, this, the entity that is aiding us has aided in those transitions. Williamsburg, I think, was one of them. Greensburg maybe did, did another. The larger districts, like Mountain Water District in eastern Kentucky, they try to do an AMR system in the same way, but I don't think all of theirs is fixed-based like this. I think Danville is lucky in that it, it is, the geography of, of Danville allows it to be a fixed-based system, which isn't unique for water utilities, I think. That's, not, not everybody has that opportunity. That, that saves a lot.
So you addressed smaller communities. What about Lexington, Louisville, northern Kentucky?
Most of them are AMR systems now.
Okay.
We, in Danville proper, we're not. Not all of them are, but I mean, most of them are going in that direction.
Right.
Or, or have made that change. We have made the change in the county. Perriville's drive-by, Junction City, for the most part, is a drive-by system. The Hedgesville system on the east end is already drive-by. That technology is older and has been deployed more frequently, and most utilities use that. The fixed-based system, which is what we are going to, is, is like, we're lucky to be able to do that, really.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, Mr. Scott? Any questions for Mr. Scott?
Yeah, I have one that's kind of a, am I on here? It's a feedback from a citizen. I think that, I know we used to, we, we shut the gates at Millennium Park at dark, is that correct?
I believe. Our Parks Recreation Director still does that, yes.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and so police, yet they probably have to dispatch somebody out as they can and try to do that. So can we do the same thing for Jackson Park now that that park has become more viable? Some of the residents would like to see those gates closed at dark and...
Sure, I think there's consistency, so we should be able to do that.
Yeah, our park system's growing. I'm bringing it up publicly just because I want people to know that we're, we're keeping an eye on safety, and sometimes we can't get to everything, but we have to be reminded. So I think if we, I know that Tom did a lot of work building some nice gates out there, so he might as well employ them.
There's nothing else? We'll move into the next subject, which is called Hear the Public.
And Mayor, I'm sorry, there was a motion and a second there, but no vote.
We need to vote.
Says who?
Says the city clerk who poked me.
Says the city clerk.
All in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dilly-dilly.
Opposed, like sign. Satisfied now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We're in that section we call Hear the Public. This is the public's opportunity to address any subject that they'd like to, as long as it's not illegal or immoral. We will hear your comments.
Well, that set them down.
Well, it did, okay, yeah. Seeing none, we will move, we will move, oh, Ms. Cochrane.
As he was, my name is Margaret Calhoun, and as I was talking about the closing the gates at the parks, so we have a problem at Baywood Park, and I think it needs more lighting on the side of where the slide, the slides where the kids play, and to the front, you know, on to the basketball court, because the lighting close to the road don't help. They got the lighting going on the other side to be peace. I don't know why they didn't put no lighting over by the track. And they supposed to be gone at a certain time, at dark, when it gets dark, but they don't. They over in the gazebo doing drugs. And also having a problem about them speeding on J.E. Woods and Toombs Court. And it's cars, trucks, city trucks, sometimes the police. And we have deaf people living on J.E. Woods, but you don't ever know when a child going dart out in the road going to the park. So I'm thinking they, I mean, if it could be some speed bumps put down. Is that asking too much?
I think on both cases, the lighting and the speed bumps, we'll let our city engineer investigate that.
Yes. And also, where I live at, I happen, a housing authority of Danville is putting tree limbs in, in the back of, on the side of Toombs Court, behind the center, that looks like a church, you know, in the middle part, and then we got a garden, and then they put the tree limbs back there on the edge from every site. And I'm like Granny on Beverly Hillbillies. It's all kind of critters that come out there. Paws and scumps, bats, and sometimes them bats will follow you like they did one year. And somebody got on them last time, they had to burn the leaves, but then they doing it again. And it looks bad for our neighborhood. It used to be a dump, and it ain't no dump no more. And they take it, you know, get the tree limbs from all the sites of housing, throw it, bring them down out in Toombs, put them in the back. And you can see it from J.E. Woods in Third Square.
Earl, are you on that?
We'll look at it with the city manager, yeah.
What else, ma'am? You're on the road, keep going.
Let's see if I got everything all right. Oh, yes. The... The, the street on J.E. Woods. When you come in off of Second Street, I own, I think it's just in the Third Square where it snowed one year and that saw is eating up the road and big chunks are coming from it. And it's, that's dangerous, somebody might slip and fall on it.
Got that, Earl?
Yes, sir.
Got that? Okay. And I think it's saw.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
We thank you for your input, valuable input.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And y'all have a blessed day.
Yes, ma'am.
You too, thank you.
You as well.
And be safe going out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Ernie Moore. As usual, I have a complaint. Today was supposed to be leaf pickup day in my neighborhood and I had leaves along my curb. Not high, it's probably just about as high as the curb and about the width of the little concrete strip between the curb and the blacktop. The leaf pickup people come along, they wouldn't pick them up. They said that their instructions were, or at least this is what they told my neighbor I wasn't at home, said their instructions were they only had to pick up piles of leaves. That didn't constitute a pile. Now, I've never had that happen before, every year. If you leave leaves out along the gutter there or whatever, that vacuum that they have will just about cover that one foot width. They just go slowly down through there and pick up all the leaves. But they refused to pick those up. They refused to pick one of my neighbor's leaves up, cause they were not in a pile, one big pile. That's dumb BS. Now, they told my neighbor after he argued with them and they wouldn't, still wouldn't pick it up, they told my neighbor that they'd be back by nine o'clock in the morning. I don't expect them. I would be in shock if they did.
Got that, Earl?
Yes, sir.
Let's shock them.
What, what is the, is there any reason why they should?
Well, they don't usually rake leaves in a yard and so if they, it's, it's what I find most, most cases, it's an opinion. And if they, they've looked at it and if they think that they have to rake leaves to do it, they, they tend not to do that, that is true. That's what, because they're not supposed to be raking leaves.
No, they have to.
Along the edge of, well, and, and I understand that perspective. So we'll look at it and we'll meet, we'll meet with them in the morning and try to figure out what, what's going on.
My yard is clean, they didn't have to rake any leaves. They said they didn't have, supposedly didn't have to clean up the curb. There wasn't any leaves on the curb because I went through there yesterday and raked them all off down the gutter.
Well, we will, we will look into it, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. We will move into Commissioner comments. Who would like to go first? Fine, and I will. I'd like to thank the Danville Fire Department for the excellent chili after the parade. Appreciate that. And I didn't get into the Community Arts Center, mostly because by the time I got there, there was a line standing out the front door and the side door. So I'm, I'm confident that went well. For the public's information, the skating rink is the brainchild of the heart of Danville. So that is, that has been their, their baby and I think it's great that the kids have enjoyed it. If you've got any comments, pros or cons about that, I suggest you direct that to the heart of them. End of my comments.
Just want to remind everyone that both of our football teams are playing for the state title this weekend.
Good point.
Bull County plays at seven o'clock Friday night at Commonwealth Stadium and Danville plays at one on Saturday, also at Commonwealth Stadium. It is all general seating and you can get your tickets online. K H S A A dot com and they're $13.
You already have yours, I think.
I was ordering my tickets with that last interception that Bull County had. I was listening to the radio. I was online as they caught the ball.
Gentlemen, anything from you two?
I was gonna, you thank the fire department for the chili. I was gonna thank him for hanging, you know, again, hanging the lights and making downtown look like it does. I know if they got to list their 100 favorite things to do, that probably would be number 112. But they always do it and always do a good job and we appreciate it and the town appreciates it. And I was gonna mention the football team as well and the skating rink, but you've covered that, so I'll turn it over to the esteemed Commissioner Serres.
Go ahead. Thanks. So, yeah. Mayor, you covered a lot of ground and so did you, both commissioners, my fellow commissioners. So it was a busy night and I applaud the police department for also being involved there and the parade downtown and along with everything else the mayor mentioned, but, so there was a lot of activity happening and they had a lot of work to do and I think that something that was kind of hidden in the shadows, which speaks well for our community and that is the pup crawl was going on, which benefits the Humane Society and I, from all I could tell, it was very well attended as per usual. This is the fourth annual pup crawl and so, again, that speaks well for our community along with the other things that were happening. It was a very, very busy Saturday, so that's good. And I did attend a meeting over at the CVB. Little energy going on here with our trails. We had three people that are involved with the state come and talk to us and answer questions that we had. And so I'm very excited about 2018. I think we're going to be moving with parks and trails in a big way and I just wanted to share that, so. Nothing new for Danville, but we just keep that ball rolling.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, we'll move on to item eight, which is the payment of the bills, which you have in front of you. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the payment of the bills as presented.
Move for approval of payment of the bills in the amount of $437,768.79.
Thanks, Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Serres, any discussion?
Most of that is Commissioner Terry's salary.
I wish.
If there's no further comments, Chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item nine is Resolution 2017-11-27-03. This is with respect to the Library and Archives Grant Award Acceptance. Donna Peak?
We would just ask that you accept Resolution 2017-11-27-03 and that just will accept a grant that was awarded to the city of Danville for $12,715 with no matching dollars.
And what will this be used for?
To finish up covering some of the oldest books we have and scanning them.
Excellent. Do hear a motion?
I'll move to accept resolution number 2017-11-27-03.
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Serres and Commissioner Terry, further discussion?
How many years have we been working on this, Donna? You've gotten this grant. So...
Three times, yeah. So this will be finishing up some of the oldest, oldest books, probably over 10 years, but we've gotten three grants.
Does this just cover materials for that or materials and labor?
It covers everything, everything's covered, so.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 10 is the Open Gov presentation. Michelle Gossner.
Good evening. Before we start, I want to let you all know that this is not everything that Open Gov does, this is just a very starting part of it. We'll be working in the next month to get it more interactive, get more drop-down menus so that you can see more information, but we wanted to get it out there to you all to see what we were working on and see what was coming in the future. Alex, lights. Okay, this is the city of Danville website, as you can see, and there is a quick link on the website for Open Gov. If you can find the mouse. There we go. There, see it now? And it, it'll automatically come up to whatever, to your monthly financial statements and that'll show. We don't have all the years loaded. We have 2017, 18. Right now, we're working on, there's some past years and I'll show you annually, but we'll be working to get the rest of some, the years that are missing in there and everything else. This has, as you can see at the thing over on the side, you got your expenses and you can always click on that, them, or you can click on your revenues, or you can come over here to your graph and just click your color. And then it get, it drops it down to even more. It breaks it down between all your different expenses that you have. Then you can click on it even farther and it'll give you even more information that you need between, you know, this one salary and wages between salaries and employee benefits. So the green part is actual salaries, the light green part is employee benefits, part of the salaries. You can also come over here to the side and go and, whoop, sorry, look at your annual data each year. And like I said, we have, we, we have 13, 14 on there, 14, 15. We'll be getting 15 and 16 up going and 16, 17 up going. But we got the first quarter data that you all had here and again, from this menu, you can click on them and you can get different views. You can also change how you want to look at it and, and it'll show you different items. Now, when we get more interactive, you'll have even more drop-down menus that you can actually click on there and see vendors in certain areas if we can, if it's not redacted information, which will mostly be on the revenue side. But you can also see the revenue information also. We'll go back to monthly and look at a little bit of revenue information. And these will interact as on a modified cash basis until the very end of the year, just like our financial statements do. And then at the end of the year, the financial statements, it'll go over to more of a accrual basis for your enterprise funds. If you want to look over here at operating. So if you want to look at water services, then it shows you the trend on it by month. And then you can always go back and look at whatever, whatever you want to look at. In the, in future, that we'll be updating all, like I said, all the other years information. We'll, we'll update this at least quarterly when you all get your hours reports. All citizens will be able to see it, you'll be able to see it. Then we'll be, after we get the financial stuff, you know, we can get, we'll start doing other data like water usage, call reports and stuff like that, that you'll be able to see online too. And this will be, helps with the transparency to the public and to the citizens.
Michelle, if I may, I would like to compliment you for beginning to implement the system. We had talked about it for a little while and due to other priorities, we didn't get to it until fairly recently. But I believe Danville's provision of Open Gov to the public puts us in a relatively small number of cities in Kentucky that have done so thus far. I'm thinking you can count them on one hand, those that have implemented that.
Yes.
Would you say that's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
What other cities have done this?
There's a couple of smaller cities that have. Edgewood has and then there's, I think, one, a couple larger cities, maybe Bo, or, oh, not a Williamsburg, but Covington has. And it's probably one of the largest cities that's done it, but they have a staff that does it. They have a person that's dedicated to doing this. We don't have a staff to do this. We can't, you know, we can't afford to employ a person just to do it. But, so, Earl, this has been a little bit long coming, but we'll upgrade it and we'll keep giving improvements to it and it'll get more and more interactive. In the next month, we hope to, and I hope maybe sometime in January to give you another presentation to show the different drop-down menus and then we'll just continue to add to it as we go.
As we get more data in the system, it's going to be increasingly useful to the City Commission and to the department heads to see how our departmental budgets are going and, and, and it's going to become a very useful tool in a fairly short period of time, I would say, given our ability to input data into it.
And you'll also be able to look at different years, compare data from different years. You know, online, anybody will be able to do that. They'll be able to look and see the different years and be very transparent in that.
You mentioned redacting some income information. What would that be?
We're not allowed to give out, for example, alcohol information, who brings in alcohol money, how much each person brings in. We're not, it's required by law that we're not allowed to give that information out, so we'll have to, you know, that won't be a pull-down menu. All you'll see is the total numbers. Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Thanks, Michelle. Excellent. And it's my understanding that we have no need for a executive session, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, all right. So with that, almost, almost got our best time, but we didn't. Chair will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the motion carries.